Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, May 14, 2019. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I'm your deputy city clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, David Tatro. The following is a list of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilman Ricky Burgess presents Bill Number 1654. Resolution amending Resolution 98 of 2019, which authorized the issuance of a warrant in favor of Tabitha Workmeister on her own behalf and as guardian on behalf of her minor children in an amount not to exceed $80,000 by changing the issuance to four warrants as follows. In favor of Tabitha Workmeister, guardian, on behalf of her minor children in the amount of $30, $30,000, and in favor of law offices of Timothy O'Brien in an amount of $39,990 in settlement of litigation per order of court of the U.S. District Court for the Western District of PA. In favor of Tabitha Workmeister in the amount of $5,005, and in favor of Greenwich Dion Wilson in the amount of $5,005 in settlement of litigation as described in full and final general release and settlement agreement between the parties. Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1655. Resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a donation agreement with the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy to accept a donation for materials to repair and improve the nine-mile run trail in Frick Park, and further authorizing the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement with the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy accepting the donations for this purpose. Bill Number 1656. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or use of existing agreements between the City of Pittsburgh and Pass Shack MTR for the professional landscape architectural services for Arsenal Park Phase One Design, cost not to exceed $394,174. Councilwoman Darlene Harris presents Bill Number 1657. Resolution providing for the filing of applications by the Commonwealth of PA Department of Human Services for grants in connection with the Joint Jobs Initiative Program Employment Advancement and Retention Network, and providing for the authorization to enter into agreements with various agencies and to pay for expenditures for costs to support, implement, and administer the program, cost not to exceed $4,585,786. Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1658. Resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for Dershowitz Investments LLC, 700 Armandale Street. Bill Number 1659. Resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for connection at South Side, 2984 Sidney Streets. Bill Number 1660. Resolution authorizing the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a second amendment to agreement of November 1, 1950 with Allegheny County Sanitation Authority, Alka-San, the Township of Upper St. Clair, Peters Township, Peters Township Sanitary Authority, and the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority. This bill is sponsored by Councilman Corey O'Connor. Councilwoman Teresa Kelsmith presents Bill Number 1661. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to receive certain grant monies for the Safe Routes to School Project through the Transportation Set Aside Program, and further authorizing an agreement to expend these grant monies toward completion of the Safe Routes to School Project. Bill Number 1662. Resolution further amending Resolution 73 of 2012 entitled, Providing for an Agreement or Use of Existing Agreements and/or Contracts for the Purchase of Materials, Supplies, and Equipment and Services for Various Projects in Connection with the City Council Neighborhood Needs Program in City Council District Number Two, and Providing for the Payment of the Costs Thereof by Transferring $1,600 from Neighborhood Learning Alliance Public Safety Cameras to D2 Deck Hockey. Total of all projects is not to exceed $14,964.53. This bill is sponsored by Councilwoman Teresa Kelsmith. Bill Number 1663. Resolution further amending and supplementing Resolution Number 855 of 2011 entitled, Adopting and Approving the 2012 Capital Budget by Transferring $1,600 from Neighborhood Learning Alliance Public Safety Cameras to D2 Deck Hockey in Council District Number Two Neighborhood Needs Program. This bill is sponsored by Councilwoman Teresa Kelsmith. And Councilman Bruce Kraus presents Bill Number 1664. Resolution Appointing Rachel Nowrocky as a Commissioner of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission of the City of Pittsburgh, term to expire April 30, 2023. Bill Number 1665. Resolution Appointing Sally Stedelman as a Commissioner of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission of the City of Pittsburgh, term to expire April 30, 2023. Bill Number 1666. Communication from Michael Lamb, City Controller, submitting the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the year ending December 31, 2018. And Bill Number 1667. Communication from City Controller Michael Lamb submitting a performance audit of the Office of Management and Budget Bureau of Procurement dated May 2019. That concludes the reading of the legislation for introduction. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for today, Tuesday, May 14, 2019. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mrs. Harris. Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger. Mr. Kraus present.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? And, oh, I'm sorry, we have special guests today to deliver the pledge allegiance. They are guests of Councilwoman Kelsmith. Councilwoman, would you come up, please?
Can they just come up? I'll wait here while they come up.
Okay.
Over here.
Oh, great. Gus and Bruno Kohler, did I say that correctly?
This is great. Welcome. We're really happy and happy here. If you'll just stand here, and there's the flag, and we'll wait for you to lead us, okay? There you go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilwoman, would you like to introduce your invited guests?
First of all, the clerk just gave the folks that said the pledge pins from City Council for saying the pledge, two pins, so different kinds. So, thank you for saying the pledge. I will say I'm very honored to present this proclamation today. You know, when I worked for Pittsburgh Public Schools, Westwood School had the silent singers and a hearing impaired class, and they did amazing things with that program. I actually took sign language so I could learn to talk to the kids. I will tell you that I gave some wrong sign one day and never used it again, but it wasn't very good at it. But I will say that you are doing amazing work at Children's Hospital, and we want to acknowledge the work that you do. Councilwoman, would you want to come up with this? It's in your district, I know. And I will say the person, this program's in your district, I believe, but the person who asked lives in my district. Whereas in 1927, the month of May, was designated Better Hearing and Speech Month in order to raise awareness about the causes and treatments of hearing loss and speech impediments. And whereas approximately 34 million Americans have some form of hearing loss, a number that has doubled over the past 30 years. And whereas, hearing loss is the third most common health problem in the United States, with more than half of the people with hearing loss younger than the age of 65. And whereas, recent studies show that neglecting hearing loss can accelerate its progression. And whereas, our citizens have, who have overcome communication disabilities through the services of speech-language pathologists, teachers of the hearing impaired, audiologists, and physicians are now able to lead an independent and productive and fulfilling lives. And whereas, technological advances in implants, hearing aids, enable people to hear better than ever before. Whereas, Children's Hospital of Pittsburgh Foundation Hearing Center Auxiliary is proud to present Cheers for Ears, an annual public awareness and fundraising program held during the month of May, when schools across the region allow students to make donations in order to break the dress code throughout the week they designate. And whereas, over the past six years, with the help of more than 20 participating schools and the support of Pittsburgh-based businesses, Flux Audio, Microsonic, and UPMC Health Plant and Cheers for Ears campaign has helped to raise awareness to more than 30,000 students and has raised thousands of dollars to support the Hearing Center at Children's Hospital of Pittsburgh. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and value the efforts of all who work to temper the isolating effects of communication disorders in one of five families affected by them. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 14, 2019 as Cheers for Ears Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you very much.
We'll say a few words to give you a proclamation.
Thank you. Do you have a second or a second? Okay. So far.
Hi, my name is Hadley Hawes. I'm a volunteer chair for Cheers for Ears, and I'm the mom of two sons with genetic hearing loss. My sons are now 15 and 13. Usually I have at least one of them here with me, but they were both out sick a couple days last week and felt they couldn't miss school this morning. This is our sixth year of Cheers for Ears and our fifth year being honored here at Pittsburgh City Council, and we're very grateful to Councilwoman Kelsmith for having us. Cheers for Ears is a three-pronged program, as some of you might recall. First of all, we raise money for important programs at the Hearing Center at Children's Hospital of Pittsburgh. Secondly, we raise awareness about hearing loss and preventing noise-induced hearing loss. And finally, it's a self-advocacy program, so our patient champions can go out into their schools and talk to their peers about hearing loss and raise money to help other children. This year, we kicked off the program at Carlo Campus School in Oakland, where Devin Faack, a sixth grader and a patient champion, raised over $2,000 for the Hearing Center at Children's Hospital. We'll conclude this year's program on the north side at Allegheny Traditional Academy, where Monique Tabak, who I have with me today, will do a presentation in Chase's second-grade classroom. Chase is another one of our patient champions. So, we have a lot of kids out there doing a lot of great things. That's really the heart of our program. So, I want to bring up Gus Kohler, who's a seventh grader from Mount Lebanon, to just do a talk for a couple minutes as well.
It's a pleasure to be here with you today. My name is Gus Kohler, and I am 13 years old and in seventh grade at Mount Lebanon. I was born deaf and was two years old when I received my bilateral cochlear implants from Dr. David Chi at Children's Hospital. My audiologist, Pam Dickinson, my early intervention teacher, Ruth Ann Adams, my hearing therapist, Terry Dornbeck, all of my teachers, and Dr. Chi helped me become the strong student I am today. I am here today to talk about Cheers for Ears, a fundraiser that supports the Hearing Center at Children's Hospital. Throughout the year, both Mount Lebanon Middle Schools, Melina and Jefferson, sell earbuds to students with 100% of the proceeds benefiting Cheers for Ears. I'm happy to share that we raised over $250 this year. I also visited my brother Bruno's third-grade class at Howe Elementary, Mount Lebanon, to raise awareness about hearing loss and cochlear implants. Through a short presentation and Kahoot game, the students learned information about their hearing as well as people with hearing loss. Because of the Hearing Center at Children's Hospital, as well as the Paul School, I am able to attend my neighborhood school. I compete on a travel soccer team and play violin in my school's orchestra. I wouldn't be able to do these things without the Hearing Center. Thank you for letting me talk about this amazing organization with all of you, and I hope you help support the Hearing Center at Children's Hospital, so other hearing impaired children have the same opportunities as I do. Thank you.
It's hard to follow that amazing young man. My name is Monique Tabak. I'm an audiologist at Children's Hospital of Pittsburgh, and I have the pleasure of going out into our schools to talk to our students about hearing health and noise-induced hearing loss and prevention of noise-induced hearing loss. I'm always so impressed at the attentiveness of our students and their great, great questions that they come up with. They're always so curious about our hearing health that isn't taught very well, or if at all, in our schools. So, what Cheers for Ears does for these students is amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to thank Councilwoman Smith for bringing these fine people down here. Thank you so much for coming down and letting us know about your good work. I think this is such a great example of Pittsburghers organizing to provide care for other Pittsburghers. I really appreciate everything you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is Allegheny in your or Councilwoman Lavelle's district? You want to come up? Okay, thanks. And I will say my son's girlfriend teaches special education. Could you also, after Councilwoman Harris says a few words, a few words, could you tell people if they want to donate how they could donate if they're not involved with the school Dress Down Day? Thank you.
I'd just like to say I look forward to every time you come down here every year. And this little young man, could you say a few words? I try. I try, here. No? Okay. Want to make sure he had the option.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Amy Raymond, and I work for the Children's Hospital of Pittsburgh Foundation. And I'm just going to ask a quick question. Raise your hand if you have free time. Anybody? Okay. City Council people that raise their hands, I find that hard to believe. Nobody has free time, especially these students, and it amazes me on a daily basis that we get phone calls, we get emails, we get replies to what we call a common forum on our website of students asking how they can help their peers. And these are students, some of them that don't even have hearing loss, and so they're recognizing that they have a friend or a student or a classmate that has hearing loss, and they want to get involved and they want to be a part of it. And this is in addition to everything else. We were talking on the way in about their schedules. Gus not only plays violin, he writes music, you know, no big deal. He writes music, he plays violin, he plays soccer, he keeps up with his brother. He's doing all of that, and in addition, he's raising money for a program that supports the Hearing Center at Children's. We could not be more grateful and more proud to call them friends and partners. So, thank you for the opportunity. If you're interested in learning more, if you go to give2childrens.org, that's the foundation site, and you can scroll down on clicking a way to get involved, and Cheers for Ears will be one of those opportunities. And we welcome you to reach out through that forum if you have questions, if you have a business that would like to support the program. This isn't just school-based, as Hadley mentioned, it is community-based, and it truly does take a village, and we appreciate each and every one of you that fill that not-so-much-free time with the generosity and the thoughtfulness of helping others. So, thank you again for the opportunity and have a great Tuesday.
If you'd like, may we have all members with a photograph, please? Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you. Very nice. May we have Councilman Burgess, followed by O'Connor, followed by Harris? Morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
Good, how are you?
Good. Miss Williams and all those who are here. All those here from Movie Scene Queen would come forth, please.
Don't be shy. Please come up.
Come on up with me. Come on. Come on. Everybody, come on. Come on. Come on. You stand, you stand right where you're at. You're good. Right where you're at. The rest of you, come on, around me. Come on. All right. She's adorable. She's absolutely gorgeous. A little red on. You come here, you come behind, you really, you pretty much want to stay, you can, it doesn't matter. You can come up here.
It doesn't. Okay? Otherwise, we're not going to get you like a camera.
I'm extremely excited about this particular proclamation, and before I read it, I'll say some things that I don't usually chat about much that most people don't know. I have been studying film most of my life. I've been teaching film in college probably now 25 years or so, 30 years or so, and so film is something that I'm really interested in, although I rarely talk about it. I watch lots of movies and analyze lots of movies, and so this is close to my heart. This proclamation is close to my heart, and you're just the cutest thing in the world, I must admit. I must admit. I like you. You're going to be the best thing I see today. You know that? Absolutely. Absolutely. She knows that too, right? Already. All right. Whereas, Movie Scene Queen is an interactive entertainment blog for free movies and music. Since inception, Movie Scene Queen has hosted 214 advanced movie screenings and distributed more than 50,000 free movie tickets to Pittsburgh residents. And whereas, all services from Movie Scene Queen are at no cost. More than half of their movie tickets have been distributed to schools and school programs from Pittsburgh Phazon, Pittsburgh Westinghouse, Pittsburgh Student Achievement Group, and Pittsburgh Obama. Movie Scene Queen provides opportunity for schools, I had to, provide opportunity for schools and community groups to have free access to movies. And whereas, Mercedes J. Williams, owner and operator of Movie Scene Queen, uses her social network popularity to share her access to private movie screens with everyone. And whereas, World Magazine inducted Mercedes in Movie Scene Queen in the 2016 Women in Business Class. In April 2018, Movie Scene Queen earned Pennsylvania Keystone Press Award Second Place for Feature Best Beat Reporting. In January, Movie Scene Queen celebrated six years of being in business. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend Movie Scene Queen for its contributions to journalism, film, and education, and be it further resolved, the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, May 14, 2019, to be Movie Scene Queen in the City of Pittsburgh.
Sum of second.
Aye.
So, I want to thank everybody who came out today. The idea is that my family and 100 women who I call Pittsburgh's leading ladies, entrepreneurs, trailblazers, are here to accept this proclamation with me. I'm grateful for everyone who's here. Everybody behind me has had some type of deposit in my life, whether big or small, when it comes to me being an entrepreneur, a mother, a wife, an advocate, and educator. I would also like to invite all of City Council tonight to celebrate Movie Scene Queen Day. We have two screening opportunities for you and one guest. You can attend John Wick Three on the South Side at 7:30, or you can attend A Dog's Journey at the Waterfront at 7:30. But that's open to all of City Council, its staff, and Mayor Bill Pezzuto. Again, thank you.
We have, we have, we have former Councilmen, present school board member, and friend, and big brother, Sala Houdin, he's in the house.
Thank you. Thank you. Morning, Council. It is great to be back in this chamber, and especially great to be here with some of my immediate family. We are a big family, and we love you. It's good to be back. Thank you all very much for including us in this great honor. Thank you.
I worked for her for a couple years, so wherever she speaks, I still listen.
We are extremely proud of Mercedes and the work that she does. Before she was a movie queen, she was a queen in the school district. She was one of my former students in elementary school at Lincoln, and she ran that, well, at least she tried to. But I just want, I'm so proud of the way she has just embraced the community, advocated for children, and especially advocating for our children in need. So, I want to say thank her. I want to thank her. I want to thank her family, especially her mom, for allowing her to come out and do the kind of work that she's been doing for a very long time in supporting children and young girls within our community. It's a family affair, so I just want to say thank you, and we are so proud of her today. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Come on in.
I'll make it quick, but Mercedes represents another big entity, and that's the Pittsburgh Black Media Federation. She is an alumnus of the Frank E. Bolden Journalism Workshop, and I like to say that's probably where she got a lot of her chops honed, and I'm just so grateful. We are, as an organization, so proud of her and just thank God for her success and how she's continued to build on the media reputation. And again, kudos to her mother, beautiful mother and family who has supported her along the way. They started early, hint, and we're just blessed by you, Mercedes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I'll make it quick, but Mercedes represents another big entity, and that's the Pittsburgh Black Media Federation. She is an alumnus of the Frank E. Bolden Journalism Workshop, and I like to say that's probably where she got a lot of her chops honed, and I'm just so grateful. We are, as an organization, so proud of her and just thank God for her success and how she's continued to build on the media reputation. And again, kudos to her mother, beautiful mother and family who has supported her along the way. They started early, hint, and we're just blessed by you, Mercedes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Nina. Here's a microphone. Does everyone sort of want to announce who you are, those who didn't talk? No, yes? No, yes? No, no? Nina wanted to tell who she was, though. All right. You're a future star. You're going to be in movies, huh? Yeah, I can tell. Yeah. You love the mic. Yeah, I know. I know. I know. All right. So, we're going, huh?
I'll give it to her.
Huh?
Give her the mic. Let her say something.
She did say something. You want to say something else? Go ahead. Say something else.
Nina.
Nina, okay. All right. So, we're going to take pictures. I think, Chris, can you get, can you get all of us? Have you opened the pro?
You can't get the little baby in the back there.
It's, it's.
Tighten up.
That's the bad thing about the pro.
Turn around.
See, that's a purse.
There you go.
Is that your purse?
Yeah.
Say cheese.
Smile pretty. Turn around for the picture. There you go.
Ladies and gentlemen, right here, please. Thank you, everybody, for coming down. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
The child's a star.
Much. Thank you, Councilman. May we have Councilman O'Connor next? Thank you. Morning, Councilman.
All right. Can we have Dr. Zaja and all of his group come on up? Come on right up. This is a. Very, yeah, that's perfect. Yeah, you're good. You're good. You're right there. Wait till they head out. Okay. Wait a few minutes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We have a very special proc today. If you probably have been born since maybe 1981 in Pittsburgh, you might have had this doctor. And I think that's a great credit. He's delivered over 8,000 babies. And he's also very famous. He's famous that he's on YouTube and was in a Super Bowl commercial. And it wasn't the one with Joe Green and the Pepsi or the Coca-Cola one. Whereas, born in Nigeria in 1946 to Emmanuel and Mary Andrew Zaja, Carrie Andrew Zaja attended college in Nigeria and then moved to the United States to begin residency training at Allegheny General Hospital, where he spent the years from 1981 to 2001, establishing a respected career. And in 2001, he moved to practice at UPMC McGee's Women's Hospital, delivering over 8,000 babies, and selected by his peers for inclusion in Best Doctors in America and Guide to Top Doctors with the highest number of nominations in our region. And whereas known for his singing ability, the doctor began to sing with Pittsburgh concerts all across the region, but he also gained fame as the singing doctor who celebrates the birth of each baby with deliveries by singing songs such as, it's probably a good one, Happy Birthday, and What a Wonderful World, a tradition handed down to him from his mentor in Nigeria. Featured in a TV commercial for the Super Bowl in 1996, he also became a viral sensation on YouTube in 2013. And whereas, after 45 years of dedicated service to his practice and to our region, spreading joy and happiness to countless families and teaching and mentoring many young doctors, he will be retiring July 1, 2019. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, May 14, 2019, to be Dr. Carrie Andrew Zaja Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May I have a motion and a second, please?
Congratulations.
All in favor. Aye. Motion passes.
So, we just want to know who is going to sing next to all the babies. Are you training anybody up here?
They have been trained.
They've been trained, but they're not good enough yet. They're working on it. They're working.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Councilman O'Connor. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. And thank you, Council members. And we are pleased to be here and really grateful to accept this proclamation. I want to say a few words, if you don't mind. Just a few. Okay, okay. When my wife Lorna and I arrived in Pittsburgh here, 1976, there was a jingle on the radio stations that said, Pittsburgh, someplace special. Any of you remember that? Yes, 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 yes. And that's how the city was introduced to us. It sounded magical. And I can tell you that my family and myself, we have been living witnesses of that kind of magic in Pittsburgh. Pittsburgh has been very special to us. We have enjoyed the great neighborhoods in the city. In the early days, we lived on Fifth Avenue, you know, in Shady Side. Then we were able to afford a small house in Standing Heights. And we lived there for seven years and before moving to the suburbs. You'll forgive me. But even then, we have benefited from a lot of good stuff in Pittsburgh. Great schools, colleges, establishments that abound. Even after moving to the suburbs, our kids still came to the city to go to high school. Shady Side Academy, Central Catholic. And one of them, one of them who still stays around, he, this one, he moved on to Duquesne University from Central. So, he's a true Pittsburgh boy. Will never leave, probably. So. It's been a pleasure knowing all these neighborhoods. I see, I look up there and I see, I can recognize most of these. Some of them don't exist anymore, but I've been long enough in Pittsburgh to know many of them. My wife attended college and grad school at University of Pittsburgh, another great connection for us. And I've been blessed to have lived this my entire career, professional career, in this great city, nowhere else in this country. And I have done it on both sides of the river, this Allegheny River. And people say Pittsburghers don't travel across rivers. That's not true. I have done it successfully. All right. I am privileged that this career that I've had has culminated with working at one of the best institutions for obstetrician-gynecology, UPMC McGee Women's Hospital. And most of the people you see here are colleagues of mine at that institution. McGee, a real gem. It's one of the best in the country. And I just feel good that that's where I belong for the past few years, few years. Pittsburgh is known as a city of champions, right? Nobody can question that. For me, the champions are not only in sports, but it's the people I see every day. People, you walk across people and they're smiling at you. They're smiling with you. Colleagues at the hospital, supporting each other. Those are the champions that I'm familiar with. My coworkers, making life easy for the patients, making patients heal, and making me and all of us successful. When I travel outside Pittsburgh, people hear my accent, which is still there, and, right? And they'll say, where are you from? Where are you from? And I would say, I'm from Pittsburgh. And they'll ask you, where are you from? I say, Pittsburgh. I'm from Pittsburgh. If you ask a third time, you're asking for a fight. And that's how I feel about Pittsburgh. I'm really proud to be from here. When Peggy Finnegan, in her program, asked me to do a segment on Proud to be from Pittsburgh, I felt I could not ask for any more proof that I'm really proud to be from here. So, Pittsburgh, I thank you for being a super special place, a city of champions, sports, and also everyday champions. Thank you for giving me a hometown that I'm truly proud of. Thank you for filling me with joy. This proclamation is a great honor to me, and I share it with my family, my wife, Lorna, my son, Carrie, and the other children. They're not able to come today, and one grandson. But I share it with them. But I share it also with my work family, who are here. It's special. I also share it with all the people who have given me joy as I have moved around this city. You've made it easy for me to smile and to sing. In return, I ask one thing of you. Please continue to keep a smile on your face and a song in your heart. Thank you.
Okay. Good morning. I'm Jeff Nor, Executive Administrator for the Department of OB-GYN at UPMC McGee Women's Hospital. I've had the great pleasure of working with Dr. Zaja for the last eight years, some of these folks, many more than that. But as we said, after nearly 20 years of caring for patients at UPMC McGee Women's, Dr. Zaja is leaving us at the end of June. And selfishly, we are dreading that day, but we are also, couldn't be happier for Dr. Zaja and his family as they start this next chapter in life. He's an incredible physician. I think many people know that. But to know him is to know that he's an even better man. And it's been a true honor and privilege of mine to have the opportunity to work with Dr. Zaja for these years, and how fitting that we now have May 14, 2019, as Dr. Carrie Andrew Zaja Day. So, thank you very much.
Good morning. Well, it's been a minute since I've been in this building. I just want to say, I think I speak for everybody up here, that we are going to so miss him. He is a bright spot in our day. He dances down the hallways. I still want to be him when I grow up. He sings Happy Birthday to every one of us, too. So, he has not only greeted newborns with that for years, but he sings to us. One of the girls, we were just talking, and one of the girls was telling me that on the Press Ganey, which is our, kind of our customer service polls that are done, one of his patients actually wrote, "I only love three men in my life, my husband, God, and Dr. Zaja." So, that just is a really good representation of how we feel about him. There are some big shoes to fill here. And I've been with him for 15 years. I don't know what I'm going to do. And some of these people have been with him for longer than that. But what a wonderful way to bring a baby into the world. Just think about that. You know, that's how they start. And we are really going to miss him. And I thank you so much for allowing us to do this today. Thank you.
Go up another step.
Me, too?
We can get the councilman out.
No.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. Can we have Councilwoman Harris, please?
Sandwich Week on the North Side again. So, those that are here for Sandwich Week, come forward. We have the winner coming forward. How are you? Okay. And this is, great. We've been doing this for years now on the North Side. And congratulations. And we have the winners on each side here. And you get to hold it till next year. So, right, we have a proclamation here this morning. It's falling apart. It starts. Okay. And it reads, whereas the North Side Leadership Conference and Highmark presents the eighth annual North Side Sandwich Week, Bun of Steel, with 10 participating restaurants from May 9 to May 19, 2019. And whereas, all of the sandwiches met by friendly but serious competition at the North Side Sandwich Sampler on May 19, 2019. And whereas, the restaurant and sandwiches featured in the 2019 North Side Sandwich Week are California Coffee Bar, Nani's Broccoli Sandwich, Penn Brewery, the Deutschland Dip, Max's Allegheny Tavern, Springtime Turkey Apple Delight, Fig and Ash, the Pork Shank Cuban. And that's the winner this year. The Cafe, Wordsing, Pudding Fish, and Marshall's, Marshall's Famous Kabassi, Brooks on the North, the Pork Belly Bar Ma, Beer Pub, Smoked Salmon, and the Wheelhouse Restaurant at Rivers Casino, the Barbecue Pork Sandwich, and the Mayfly Market in Delhi, the Braised Beef Sandwich. And whereas, the 2019 North Side Sandwich Week featured the following celebrities, Liza Conner, local musician, Suzanne Lawrence, local stand-up comedian, Olga Watkins, general manager of Waffle and Caffeinated in downtown Pittsburgh. And whereas, the first runner-up of the North Side Sandwich Week, selected by the public and the celebrity judges, was Bru- Bru on the North Side for their Pork Belly Bar Ma. And whereas, the people and the celebrity judges. And whereas, the people and the celebrity judges chose the North Side Sandwich King to be the Fig and Ash for his Pork Shank Cuban sandwich, consisting of Parma, Capocola, pickles, Gruyere cheese, I haven't tasted that one, spicy mustard, and farm bread. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize the North Side Leadership Conference, Highmark, and all of the participants and sponsors in the 2019 North Side Sandwich Week for making such a unique and enjoyable event possible. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Fig and Ash shall overrule the North Side by brevinance and grace for one year as North Side Sandwich King. And be it therefore, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare May 19 to be North Side Sandwich Week in the City of Pittsburgh."
May I have a motion in a second, please? On favor? Aye. Motion passes. Congratulations again.
I just want to say a few words.
Well, my name is Alex Feltovic. I'm a co-owner at Fig and Ash. Unfortunately, we haven't sold a sandwich yet, but we are very eager to do so in the fall. This is our second year running now with my brother-in-law, Chef Corey Hughes. We're very excited to be a part of the neighborhood, as a lot of you know. A lot of great things going on in the rehabilitation of one of the best, greatest neighborhoods in the city, my personal favorite, a lot due to Ms. Harris and her great work that she's done over the years there, really trying to promote the better good. So, we're very excited to be a part of the community, hoping to be in the fall, so running through the hoops, as we all know that you have to do. But really appreciate everyone. Thank you so much.
And as Councilwoman Harris said, there are 10 overall participating restaurants. Well, Fig and Ash isn't quite open yet, so there are nine other participating restaurants in Sandwich Week. Each and every single one of them have a super unique signature sandwich that they're offering through May 19. Be sure to stop by and say hi to all of them. They're all incredible restaurants owned by incredible Pittsburgh and North Side residents. They're all incredible assets to North Side and Pittsburgh as a whole. The North Side is obviously just a very unique section of the city with tons of great characters and restaurants, and so do your best to get over there and try them all out.
Thank you.
And only on the North Side, but I have some others for you to take back.
Okay, Madam Clerk, there are several proclamations to be read into the record. You, Councilman O'Connor and Councilwoman Kell Smith, thank you.
Councilwoman Kell Smith presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare May 18, 2019, to be Cedric Mitchell Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Councilwoman Kell Smith also presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, May 18, 2019, to be Paul BJ Steiner Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Councilman O'Connor presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, May 18, 2019, to be Minister Rena Fuller and George Thomas Memorial Day. Councilman O'Connor also presents, now therefore be it resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and commend with gratitude the visionary national leadership of Phipps Conservatory and Botanical Gardens, exemplified by the completion of its new exhibit staging center and living campus, in honors the opening of the new exhibit staging center and the debut of the living campus benefiting all in our most livable city of Pittsburgh.
May I have a mo? Sorry, one more?
Yes. Councilman O'Connor and Councilwoman Erica Strasburger presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, May 14, 2019, to be Michael Ehrman Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May I have a motion in a second, please? On favor? Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much. That takes us into public comment. Anyone wishing to speak before City Council this morning, of course, we'll have three minutes in which to do so. I would like to take this time to remind everyone that our rules of council are clear in stating that comment is limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or could come before this council. We will not permit profanity, and we will maintain order at all times. Please begin by giving your name and the neighborhood in which you reside for our public record. The green light will indicate the start of your three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you will have one minute to summarize your thoughts, and when the red light comes on, then your time will have expired. Good morning, Dr. Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Pittsburgh City, Oakland, and Oakland, San Francisco Cities. Chise, Nihon Tokkei, Global Intelligence Society candidate for President 2020, globalintelligencesoociety.org. June 2019 is GIS-sponsored Asian Intelligence Month, which I created in 2010 along with ones for each of the other four regions. A concern of Pittsburgh Council is opposition to general anti-diversity prejudice. So, one, a council concern is to oppose anti-Asianism, a variant of which is anti-Far East Asianism. If Pittsburgh City Council fails to provide monetary support to GPEP efforts, gold Far East Asian-based political empowerment projects similar to council funding of BPEP, Black Political Empowerment Programs, you, Mr. Kraus, and all of the rest of you district representatives are racists.
Yes.
If I say that the average national intelligence, an average national intelligence comparison and contrast, using the most reliable IQ test indicates that South Koreans, Japanese, and Chinese nationals are the most intelligent in the world, as from UNESCO, is that racist, negative, biased, irrationally doing divisiveness? I don't think so. That is racialist, positive, rationally using fact-based analytic to delineate distinctiveness. Second, a concern of council is to oppose antisemitism, another form of anti-diversity bias, both anti-Jewish antisemitism and anti-Arabic antisemitism. With many Jews worldwide, I view opposition to the existence of Israel, a Jewish citizen majority, West Asian state with full international UN recognition, as a form of anti-Jewish antisemitism. With many Arabs across the world, I view opposition to full UN recognition of Palestine and Arabic citizen majority, West Asian state, as a form of anti-Arabic antisemitism. Since neither the City of Pittsburgh Office of Mayor nor the City Offices of Council have expressed explicit imprint public support for full state recognition of Palestine to thousands of Pittsburghers of Arabic descent, and to millions of Arab US Americans, and to me, Mr. Pedudo, and all of you district representatives, including Mr. O'Connor, District 5, and Ms. Strasburger, District 8, on Palestine, you are anti-Arabic antisemites.
Thanks, Dr. Miller. May we have our next speaker, please? Good morning, Ms. Brown.
You know, my name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. Yesterday was Mother's Day. So, I want to start off with something, because I've been coming for years. It used to be, there were people from Broadhead and I think Elliott, and they would say, they'd love to hear stories. I just wanted to tell you about my little one, that four that come here, the little tiny one. She wanted to go, I don't bring her down here to City Council, Mr. Kraus, because of the way you disrespected me. And I don't want them to see anybody disrespect me, ma, because they think I'm the whirl. And I try to teach them to treat people and love people and respect the police. But when you come down here and you disrespect me, I didn't bring them. So, they wanted to go to the restaurant. I come back, the little one's on the floor, I could hear her cry, and the big, the five-year-old is saying, she's crying. Let's see, she's crying. I say, what? She got a $20 bill in her hand, and she's saying, "One money is not enough. It's not enough for us to eat. One money, one money." So, I did take her somewhere, and we got a change. You know what? These babies, if you watch them, like the $20 was coming, her eyes were so big, and when she gave it to them, she just snatched, gave me something, "Here, Grandma, here, here, Nana," just so happy that she found out that wasn't a $1 bill. Also, I want to say something, and I must. I am thinking about voting for her. I'm against Patik. And then one time, I was 100% for him. I went to his courtroom, I was a defend, I was in there. He talked to me like a dog. He said he wanted to keep what we're doing up in the Hill. And the lady that jumped on me that I bit says she didn't bring it down. She called number two, her cousin is a detective, and he sent it down. You know what? He's too close to the police, I'm telling you. And you know, I tried to speak the truth. We have to save our young men. I'm 72, and the way he did me, someone young. Now, this lady says here, if there's someone that's out, put out, they're going to have someone from the homeless shelter to be able to work with these people and the children. Do you know when they put someone out? My daughter paid $2,500. We couldn't get in for two months. Two months, $2,500, and she still was homeless. But Patik, he tried to talk to her, but talking, when you let him do, you let these slum, and he was a slum landlord, slum, and I know it. So, when you talk about these affordable housing, they have it down, you're doing a lot in Lawrenceville, we need them up here in the Hill.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
I'm going, see how he does? Ain't even get finished. You didn't do the white women that was here last time. You didn't make them set up, and you do that all the time. Always make a difference.
Okay, oh, boy. Okay, may we have our next speaker, please? Is there anyone else wishing to speak before public comment? Okay, we will close this portion of the council meeting and go into presentation of papers. Our first committee of the morning is our Committee on Finance and Law. Councilman Burgess is our chair.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1654, Resolution Amending Resolution 98, which authorized the issuance of a warrant in favor of Tabitha Workmeister by changing the issuance to four warrants as follows: in favor of Tabitha Workmeister-Guardian on behalf of her minor children in the amount of $30,000, and in favor of the law offices of Timothy O'Brien in the amount of $39,990 in settlement of litigation per order of court of the US District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania in favor of Tabitha in the amount of $5,000, $5,000, and in favor of Greenwich Dion Wilson in the amount of $5,000 in settlement of litigation as described in the full and final general release and settlement agreement between the parties. Bill Number 1668, ordinance supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title IX, zoning Chapter 922, Development Review Procedures with a new subsection, Affordable Housing Impact Statements. Bill Number 1669, Resolution Establishing the City of Pittsburgh Equity and Inclusion Implementation Team. Bill Number 1670, ordinance supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title I, Administrative Article III, Organizations, Departments generally by adding a new subsection 11103, Equity Standards and Requirements for All Departments and Units of City Government. Bill Number 1671, Resolution Declaring the City of Pittsburgh as an All-In City.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman, you have a motion you wish to offer on Bill 1654?
Yes, motion to waive Rule 8 so that that particular bill can appear on tomorrow's agenda.
Thank you. May I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Do we have discussion? Then seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstention. 1654 will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Coghill, our Chair of Urban Recreation.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1655, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Enter Into a Donation Agreement with the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy to Accept a Donation for Materials to Repair and Improve the Nine Mile Run Trail in Frick Park, and Further Authorizing the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter Into an Agreement with the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy Accepting the Donations for This Purpose. Bill Number 1656, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter Into an Agreement or the Use of Existing Agreements Between the City and Pacheco Plus MTR for the Professional Landscape Architectural Services for Arsenal Park Phase 1 Design at a Cost Not to Exceed $394,174.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Gross, our Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Harris, our Chair of Human Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Harris presents Bill Number 1657, Resolution Providing for the Filing of Applications by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Human Services for Grants in Connection with the Joint Job Initiative Program Employment Advancement and Retention Network, and Providing for the Authorization to Enter Into Agreements with Various Agencies and to Pay for Expenditures for Costs to Support, Implement, and Administer the Program, Cost Not to Exceed $4,585,786.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Lavelle, our Chair of Public Safety Services.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman O'Connor, our Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1658, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for Duffler Investments LLC for 700 Armendale Street in the 25th Ward. Bill Number 1659, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for Connection at South Side 2984 Sidney Street in the 16th Ward. Bill Number 1660, Resolution Authorizing the City of Pittsburgh to Enter Into a Second Amendment to Agreement of November 1, 1950, with the Allegheny County Sanitation Authority, the Township of Upper St. Clair, Peters Township, Peters Township Sanitary Authority, and Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman O'Connor, you wish to offer a motion on Bill Councilman O'Connor, you wish to offer a motion on Bill 1660?
Yes, 1660 is a bill with obviously other townships in agreement with Alka Sand. Everybody is in agreement, but we're in a tight schedule to do that. So, I'd just like to make, waive the rules of council on 1660.
If you may have a second?
Second.
Do we have discussion? Then seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed abstentions? Thank you, Councilmen. 1660 will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Next, we have our Committee on Public Work Services with Councilwoman Kell Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Kell Smith presents Bill Number 1661, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City to Enter Into an Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to Receive Certain Grant Monies for the Safe Routes to School Project through the Transportation Set Aside Program, and Further Authorizing an Agreement to Expand These Grant Monies Toward Completion of the Safe Routes to School Project. Bill Number 1662, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 73 by Transferring $1,600 from Neighborhood Learning Alliance Public Safety Cameras to D2 Deck Hockey. Total of all projects is not to exceed $14,964.53. Bill Number 1663, Resolution Further Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number 855 by Transferring $1,600 from Neighborhood Learning Alliance Public Safety Cameras to D2 Deck Hockey in Council District Two Neighborhood Needs Program.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Strausberger, our Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management, may have Councilwoman Kell Smith for Councilwoman Strausberger.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair has two appointments to the Clean Pittsburgh Commission. Madam Clerk, thank you.
Council President Kraus presents Bill Number 1664, Resolution Appointing Rachael Noraki as a Commissioner of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission of the City of Pittsburgh for a term to expire April 30, 2023. Bill Number 1665, Resolution Appointing Sally Stadleman as a Commissioner of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission of the City for a term to expire April 30, 2023.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Harris, will you make a motion to include these in our already scheduled interviews?
To include them into the scheduled?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Will they all be interviewed, what is that, to schedule for tomorrow?
I am not sure if they are or not. They may be next Wednesday. But being that they're all the same commission, bring them in at the same time.
Do we have a date on it?
I don't believe yet, Councilwoman. Okay, all right, so all in favor then? Aye.
Aye, but I'd like to work with you on the schedule since this is under, you know, DPW kind of stuff.
Sure.
Thank you.
I don't know that the Clean Pittsburgh Commission's under any—
No, but I know that they work.
Okay, all right, all in favor then? Aye. Opposed abstentions, we're going to schedule those, two for interviews with the other candidates for the Clean Pittsburgh Commission, and then two communications from Controller Lamb, and I will need a motion to receive and file.
Second.
Bill Number 1666, Communication from Michael Lamb, City Controller, Submitting the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the Year Ended December 31, 2018. Bill Number 1667, Communication from City Controller, Michael Lamb, Submitting a Performance Audit of the Office of Management and Budget Bureau of Procurement dated May 2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I have a motion then to receive and file?
So move.
Second. Discussion, seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed abstentions? Thank you very much. Being we have no unfinished business before the council, we will move into reports of committee for final action and begin with Councilman Burgess, our Chair on the Committee of Finance and Law.
President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1652, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for May 8, 2019, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 1620, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 210 of the City Code, the Mayor and Office of Special Events, Department of Public Safety and Office of Special Programs, Department of Parks and Recreation, to Create an In-Kind Donation of Various Holiday Decor and Supplies from High Woods Properties, valued at $8,000, for the Purpose of the Transition of the Annual Light-Up Night Gingerbread House Display to the City-County Building in 2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of this bill under our Committee on Finance and Law. Do we have further discussion on the bill? Okay, seeing none, the bill's now ready for final action, and all in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no, and Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Lavell?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President?
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill, having received the legally required number of votes, has finally passed. Next, we have our Committee on Public Work Services. Our Chair is Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Kell Smith presents Bill Number 1653, Report of the Committee on Public Works for May 8, 2019, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 1623, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Execute Relevant Agreements to Receive Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Keystone Communities Grant Program to Renovate the Jefferson Recreation Center and the Adjacent Park, and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $402,000 for this stated purpose. The grant requires a match from the City in the amount of $402,000 for this stated purpose, for a total project cost of $804,000. Bill Number 1624, Resolution Granting unto DAH Partners, their successors, and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense a Handicap Ramp with Handrail and Landing at 6620 Hamilton Avenue in the 12th Ward, 9th Council District.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of these bills under our Public Work Services Committee. Do we have further discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called, and those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Lavell?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President?
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills, then, having received the legally required number of votes, have finally passed. That takes us into motions and resolutions. I have one brief meeting announcement. This afternoon at 1:30, council will be briefed on Bill 1621 as it relates to a professional services agreement to hire a property manager for 1412 Boulevard of the Allies. And then also, due to the primary elections next week, council's regular meeting is going to be held on Monday, May 20 at 10:00 a.m., and our standing committee meeting will be held Wednesday, May 22 at 10:00 a.m. There will be no meetings on Tuesday, May 21. With nothing further from members, may I have a motion to excuse our absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn our meeting?
Come in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, we're adjourned.